So it being six o'clock, Tuesday, April 8th, I call this meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to order. If you'll all join me in saluting flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which stands one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any minutes tonight. So we're going to jump right to approving the warrants. So I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number two for $372,602.82. School warrant number 1083 for $185,572.92. General warrant number 1084 for $104,550.92. Waste water treatment plant upgrade number 1085 for $798,322.95. We have a miscellaneous for the wastewater treatment plant and a couple other items. Number 1086 for... Is that number eight?
That's what it's on.
All right. And CDVG NB21, number 1087, for $162,041.16. Second, any discussion?
I'm also curious about that number because I haven't seen that one yet. So we just threw the guy's sign in the bans last week.
All right.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Spending requests. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That happens. All right. We have spending requests. The senior center is requesting $400 from the cleaning company to put more effort into doing a deep clean on the carpet and polishing the floors that aren't carpets. They haven't been done in years. And it's only $400. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request. I'll second. Any discussion?
Nope.
That's actually a really good price for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. $3,700 for pipe for the installation of Tucker Farm Road and prep work for the fiscal year 2026 paving. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request. Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's up?
I said, "Sorry, my mom's calling." Hi, Mom.
Do you need to take it?
No, I don't know. It's not an emergency. She's just saying hi.
Yep, that happens too.
Yeah.
Next thing we have is a contract extension for Haley Ward. They're the engineers overseeing the Mount Pleasant Street project. So I'll entertain a motion to sign the contract amendment number one to extend that with Haley Ward.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Nope. Yeah, that was coming.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have a letter from the North Brookfield Cultural Council asking to remove Connie Moore. She's missed all the cultural council meetings that have been held in the last two years. So I will entertain a motion to remove Connie Moore from the North Brookfield Cultural Council.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
And the committee handbook does say that if they miss so many meetings, that you can be removed from appointing committees, so.
And it sounds like they've tried for two years, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next thing we have is a Tecton change order.
This one you guys already voted on. I just never got the copy to sign, so.
Oh, okay.
Did you want to say something? You can raise your hand.
Two.
I was only given the.
Well, I just happened to have two.
Oh, okay. Well, all right.
All right, so the one, did we already decide both of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is one for the electrical work that APAC was originally supposed to do.
Okay.
And then the other one was the changes to the roof and insulation.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to re-sign the change orders from Tecton.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the next thing we have is new licenses for ND Enterprises, which was Nick Dupree. And it's changing from Dupree Recycling to ND Enterprises. So I will entertain a motion to sign the new licenses for Nick Dupree.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to have a special town meeting in the spring, Friday, May 9th. And I will entertain a motion to set the date of Friday, May 9th for that special town meeting.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, because I thought that we were changing it to one meeting in June to let some of the vegetary stuff get finalized instead of doing it that week.
So for the special town meeting, this one will be for people to clear up their budgets if they have any negative balances because when we do the annual town meeting, it's the second Friday in June. And that doesn't give Sheila a lot of time to get everything ready for the end of the year. So this gives her more time to make all the transfers and get everything corrected.
Okay, so that's...
This won't be the... Yeah, this isn't the annual town meeting?
No, no, I know.
I thought we were combining them into one closer to June to kind of do it all at once.
No, that's my understanding, but maybe we...
Yeah, we can have another special in June if it's necessary, but this will hopefully clear up all negative balances and transfers that need to be made.
And finalize the year.
What we did before was we put all the stuff that we normally pass over in the May meeting to the June meeting.
Warrant?
All right, so in regards to that special town meeting.
Oh, wait, you got a vote?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go again. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so in regards to that, we have the... Some members of the capital improvement planning committee that want to have articles on that meeting. And they're here and they're going to bring that up, so. And go.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit about capital improvement planning.
Sure.
For a couple seconds, just so people are kind of... Give background. And I'm kind of reading from the write-up we did for your town report. Under section five, chapter five, section six of the North Brookfield Town Bylaws, the capital improvement planning committee is tasked with receiving proposed capital improvement projects and ranks them in a priority order. This list is compared to sources of available funds to establish a sequence of funding over a five-year horizon. Capital improvement planning committee serves in an advisory capacity to the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee and residents/voters in town. The goal of capital improvement planning is to reduce the reliance on borrowing money to fund departmental capital needs. This will save the town money on interest payments while encouraging long-term planning. So, you know, we started back up in September of 2024, kind of reestablished. And we've come here looking for approval on some policies and procedures. We've got that in place. And we've kind of gone through our first round of collecting capital requests from departments. And before I kind of get into those, I do... The committee wants to thank Mr. Trent Acosta because he's been absolutely instrumental in kind of getting this thing off the ground again and kind of giving us direction and focus. So, thank you. Thank you, Joe. So we got four requests with money being what it is right now. Kind of two are kind of picked out to be kind of highest priority and ones that potentially could be approved with this financial situation this year. The first one was a request for new jobs of life from the North Brookfield Fire Department. And the chief, who's here, which... Who can speak for himself, came in with a quote from FireTech, which quoted some demo units. It was a pretty good deal. And the committee asked him to kind of give a justification, and he gave a great justification. And I won't let him kind of speak to it. We did ask him if he had other quotes. He went back out, got two other quotes to demonstrate that it actually was a good deal. Actually, it was a great deal as far as the price of the equipment. And the estimated total cost was $15,600. So certainly did a great job in doing due diligence. And, you know, as far as the purpose, I've kind of let him speak to that if he's open to that.
Yep.
So we're looking at the request, and our jobs of life are from 1987. Just to go to some of the records we do. In 2024, we responded to 34 car accidents. Seventeen of them had injuries or fatalities. Three of them, we actually had to use the jaws and go to work. We had one failure of our power unit at one of those calls. Not to say embarrassing, but, you know, could have maybe... Unfortunately, this one probably wouldn't have changed the outcome of that particular one. But not good. We were able to get it somewhat repaired on the power unit, but it's still not perfect. And we looked at trying to just replace the power unit, and it is no longer made. They either go to little tiny units that will not do the job or great big units that you mount in trucks, which is not going to be feasible for us. So in looking for these... FireTech and Safety, who's a dealer for the Amkiss brand that we like, they have a demo set of cutter and spreader. Something that they just bring out, show it to a few people, very little use on it. And like Jamie said, they're willing to sell it to us for 15.6. Some of the other companies we got quotes from were at $43,000, $35,000 for the same thing. The nice thing with these particular brand, they run off of DeWalt 60-volt batteries, which you can buy anywhere. Some of the other companies, they have proprietary batteries that are over $1,000 apiece. So that can be very expensive. We did work with the state grant, came out with a second round that we've been using for our turnout gear to purchase DeWalt batteries for them and some other DeWalt tools to replace old ones. I literally just got the notification yesterday. We were awarded less than third of what I put in for, but we got something. So we'll be able to purchase batteries for these and stuff like that to keep it going. It's just one of those things. Being battery operated allows us to work easier with less people, which we're all dealing with, all departments are dealing with this day and age, especially during the week when everybody's off at their regular job. Or you get some of the calls where you got to go way into the woods having to lug a power unit and hoses and everything like this. This is all self-contained, and you can just go. Just a couple people can do it a lot easier with these battery tools, so.
Okay. So the committee felt that was actually the one that was kind of at the top prior. And we thank the chief for dealing with our many questions and requests. We appreciate his patience. The second project is a little bit more complicated, a little bit more involved.
Okay.
That had to do with the radio system for the highway department.
Okay.
And, you know, in fairness to Randy, Randy was in the middle of moving the department from the old highway building to the new highway building while this was going on. So I kind of filled in for some of the forework. If he's okay, I'll speak to it. So right now, the current radio system that the highway has is a low-band system, which is kind of a rarity these days. Back, you know, 1960s, 70s, they were much more effective because the airwaves were much less... There was a lot less frequencies in the air. So a lot more noise pollution, which really hampers the effectiveness in the low band. The town has already accepted the fact that the radios don't work in granting stipend to the highway employees for their cell phones. So, yeah, we recognize the fact that the system doesn't work well, well enough. On top of the fact that the low-band frequency is not licensed. So even sticking with that technology, we are not... We don't hold a license from the FCC to legally use that frequency. So everyone else in the town, as well as everywhere else, is on high-grant frequency. The highway department is the last ones that were left with the low-band frequency. The town already purchased a license on June 16th, 2022, for the high-band frequency, just without using. So we bought it. We are licensed for that frequency, just highway is not equipped to use that currently. On top of that, North Brookfield Emergency Management Agency is also using a unlicensed frequency, which is high band. They have an antenna on top of the hill, up the bell hill, with fire departments and the police department. And they currently use high-band radio units. So they have the equipment, they have the antenna, they just don't hold the license. So we got a quote back a couple years ago. And Randy, you know, the quote started off to be just about $25,000. Randy worked with Belltronics, who's our radio company, Mr. Jim Wilson. Randy went through this with Jim and kind of narrowed down the scope of the quote, reduced the amount of equipment based on what he actually had for running equipment. So we were... He was able to reduce that quote down to $18,165. Okay? And what that quote does for us is it allows us to use that frequency that we bought, paid for, and is licensed for both emergency management as well as highway department. We are able to use the antenna that's on the... on bell hill for both departments. And we already own the antenna. The quote comes with a repeater station up there as well as a duplexer, which allows both departments to use the same frequency on different channels. And the new system... Well, the new system would also allow crosstalk between departments, which I think is pretty important when you consider, say, the fire department. They're out on a call, they got a fire truck stuck. They can flip over to the highway frequency and actually talk directly to the guys in the trucks. So, you know, and that goes forth with the police department as well as emergency management. So it certainly gives a high level of ability to communicate amongst the departments as well as taking care of our licensing problems.
Well, I think the funny thing is that... I think most people typically think that they can automatically do that already. You know, and then obviously we can't, right?
Right. So the $18,000 kind of makes a multi-pronged problem go away. And, you know, I mean, you know, I'm an employer. And, you know, I... There are certain responsibilities that we have to our employees. And certainly, the town has a responsibility as an employer to the highway, to the highway department employees. Giving them effective communication out in the field. Certainly, there's definitely a safety aspect to this as well as an operational aspect that helps the town in general. So we felt, you know, for $18,000, you know, it seemed like a slam dunk.
So that comes with a repeater?
Yes.
All right. Is the one... I'm pretty sure we had one installed. Has it just gone by? Is it too old?
The one up there is old, it is obsolete. You know, this, the new one is just under $2,500, which brings it up to standard. And if something happens to it now, something happens to the one up there, I don't believe it can be serviced.
Right. It is pretty old.
It is old. So again, you know, we... The committee felt like that certainly rose to the top prior.
Okay. So, yep.
Can I add something? I worked with the highway too, so the cell phones don't always get reception everywhere in town too. So the high band would definitely help out in that situation too. Because there's a lot of times where I was out and can't get ahold of anybody because the cell phone, it's kind of spotty in different areas, so it'd definitely help out.
Depending on the carrier.
Right. So those two articles for the warrant, we'll be talking about them again when we talk about all the articles. And you'll be able to write up articles. We'll take care of the motions, I think.
Okay. We're prepared for that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right, so we have a verbal resignation from Paul LeBlanc from LPAC. He didn't feel it was necessary to give us a written one. So I'll entertain a motion to accept Paul's verbal resignation from LPAC and thank him for his years of service on that committee.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Paul.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so there's been a discussion about a tuitioning agreement with Quabong Regional. And there's been some things that have gone back and forth, some rumors and whatnot. And I'd like to make a statement tonight to just kind of quell the rumor mill. It's nothing that's been... You know, we're not obligated to anything. It's just something that came up. Superintendent Duff reached out to members of the regionalization committee and asked if we'd be interested in a tuition agreement. So people talked to him. It was brought up at a school committee meeting a few weeks ago. And then last week, Mr. Duff hosted a Zoom meeting where the chairs of the school committee, the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and the town accountant were able to ask questions about some things. And the hope of that meeting is that the various boards will figure out what those outstanding questions are that there are. And there's lots of them. We have to figure out with... Before we make any decisions of that regard. We have to know what the money value is for the town, what the kids are going to get, what we're, you know, obligated for, and find out if it's actually worth doing. So it's not something that anybody's hoping to jump right into. And as far as the question goes of doing it this year, that time has probably already passed. So that being said, a little history lesson. If you... If we were to go back to 2009, the school committee approached the board of selectmen to form an education task force, is what they called it. Okay, and we formed that. And Jim Metcalf was the chair of that committee. And their goal, we do have a report from them. Their goal throughout that, I think it was two years, two and a half years they were meeting, their goal was to seek the best route forward for North Brookfield Public Schools because they knew that it was starting to get more and more difficult to sustain the level of education with the money that we have available in this town. And as time's gone on, we've gotten, you know, a lot higher budget and a lot less kids in the school. So that's why we looked into regionalization. The town voted to pursue regionalization almost three years ago now. So, like I said, it's just up for discussion. Hopefully, the various committees will put their heads together and come up with whatever outstanding questions and answers they need to have before we decide whether or not we would entertain... Actually enter into a tuition agreement with somebody. So that's all I got on that.
Are you going to share it with your fellow committee members, those of us who were not admitted to the meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, yeah, that's what we're going to do. And then probably at our next meeting, we'll be discussing that. And then hopefully, the finance committee and school committee will do the same thing. So. All right. Do you have anything else?
No.
All right.
That's where I believe the Grove Street.
South Common Neighborhood Improvement. Project budget's $535,000.
But I don't think they're applying for the... Is that what I saw? Yeah, the request is $850,000.
Administration of that is $75,000. The public... The infrastructure part's $775,000. So I'll entertain a motion to sign the fiscal year '25 CDVG application.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have anything else?
I don't, no.
Actually, that's it? All right. Public comment, period. Nancy. Sorry, she was first.
Okay. Be really quick. So the Parks and Rec Department are hosting an Earth Day celebration.
Okay.
This is going to take place on Saturday, April 26th, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at the Hayden Lodge on School Street. They will host a pancake breakfast so that everybody can fortify themselves with pancakes and sausage and coffee and juice. All the food is going to be donated by HanaFurts so that they can pick up some gloves and some trash bags and pick up some trash around town. There will be some highway department trucks available. There will be some highway department trucks available, or at least one available at the senior center from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so that folks can drop off the trash bags as they're filling them.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
Thank you. And you were next? Brandon was signing it.
She's the most, so.
My name is Judy Manning. I'm the chair of the COA, which is the council and agent. I'm here with Mary Waitena and Diane Hawkins, all members of the COA board. We are making these comments as members of the COA board and as patrons of the senior center. There have been a lot of negative comments on social media and within the town scrutinizing the seniors, the COA director and the COA board. The COA board supports our director. We want to clarify that the COA board is an advisory board. We are not a board that tells her what she can and cannot do. That is the responsibility of the board of selectmen. We feel that Courtney is doing a great job. She is participating in online trainings by MCOA, which is Mass Council and Agent. These trainings are for leadership and grant writing. She loves her job, and she really wants to help the seniors to come to the senior center as well as those who live within the town. She does not make important decisions lightly. She is a good listener, and she welcomes anyone who comes into the senior center. The senior board respects and supports her. The negative comments on social media are upsetting to the COA, the COA director, and the friends of the COA. Anyone who has any questions about what goes on at the senior center is encouraged to come in at any time during business hours and discuss concerns. We have seen four directors come and go, and each has had their own issues, but Courtney is the only one that is being publicly scrutinized, and she does not deserve the negativity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please support her, or I do.
Yes. Yes, we do.
I have a copy of what Judy wrote, if you want it.
Okay, yeah, we'll need that for the minutes.
Yeah, that'll be great. Thank you.
So regarding social media, there are, there've been a couple statements that I would like to make brief comments on. One is, there have been people that have been saying that the selectmen are lining their pockets and making all kinds of money, and that's not true.
Yeah, if you find that, I can send it my way. I haven't seen any of it.
Nothing could be further from the truth than, than that statement. The other one, and it's similar, is that the town needs to be audited, all right, to find out where money's going, okay? I'm sure people have seen that one. Well, we are audited. We're audited by a third-party audit, state-mandated, every single year. And it actually just got wrapped up, and they point out anywhere where we might have a penny off or even half a penny off. So, so we are being really careful with how we do things, and we are being watched and managed by third parties to make sure that we're not doing anything illegal. So, do you have anything to add to that? Do you disagree or agree or?
No, I agree, and I think, you know, before jumping on social media, maybe just give us a call or reach out to our offices and ask questions, we're happy to share information, or come to a meeting and ask a question. We're certainly happy to clarify anytime. But we're not going to hop on social media because that oftentimes breaks open meeting laws, so that's why you don't see us out there very often.
Who else? Brandon?
Yeah, I would kind of like to add to that sort of, I've been on a number, and am on a number of committees and boards, and I'd like to just say, mostly, everyone I've been on, people work hard, they take the position seriously, they're trying to do the best they can for the town. Nobody's perfect. Sometimes people maybe make mistakes or do things that other people don't agree with, but do the best they can, and it's kind of a shame that there's, there's so much negativity because we do have a shortage of people volunteering in this town, and there are a number of committees that could use help, and the more help we can get, the better off the town will be in the end. So, this is my two cents.
Chief? All right. And with some good news. As we all know, we had our catastrophic failure with hose and everything like that. I was able today to secure for free 1,500 feet of three-inch hose, which we desperately needed, from the town of Oxford, and we'll be going out this weekend to pick it up.
Wonderful.
Outstanding.
Good. Very good. Anything else?
You got a warrant on me for $9 million. What was that for?
That's for the borrowing.
Okay.
All right. We have. Want to read this, the spaghetti supper one?
Sure.
Two announcements.
The Friends of the Northbrook Field Council on Aging will be hosting a spaghetti dinner fundraiser on Saturday, April 26th, at the Northbrook Field Senior Center. There'll be live entertainment as well as raffles and door prizes. Tickets are $12 for adults, $6 for children, 12 and under, and they can be purchased by either stopping at the senior center or by calling 505-867-0220. All proceeds go toward programming and meals for the center, so you can finish out your day of trash cleanup with spaghetti.
There you go.
Sounds like a win-win mix.
That's right. Pancakes and spaghetti, you kicked the rug.
So we have the election update from the town clerk. So May 5th, Monday, not Tuesday like the national elections, so Monday, May 5th. We have selectmen for three years, Jamie Gilman and John Tripp. Selectmen for two years to fill a vacancy, Ralph Kay and John Mitchell. We don't have a candidate for moderator. Town clerk, Tara Hayes, for three years. School committee, for three years, we don't have a candidate, and for two years, we don't have a candidate. Water commissioner for three years, we don't have a candidate. Board of assessors for three years, Sheila Buzzell. Board of assessors for two years to fill a vacancy, Mary Kilarkey. Board of health for three years, Susan Johnson. Cemetery commissioner, Melissa Magario. Library trustees for three years, Gabrielle Holmes and Janice King. Library trustees for one year to fill a vacancy, David Mayer. Planning board for five years, we don't have a candidate. Constables for three years, Tim Nation, Von Schlegel, Christopher St. Seer, and Dennis Trelle, and you vote for three of them. So, that is that. And you want to read the candidates?
Sure. There is, thank you. Meet-the-candidate night for all Northbrook Field Town offices. The event will be presided by Jim Caldwell, Northbrook Field Town moderator. The format is, let me tell you when it is. Friday, April 11th, at 6:00 p.m., Northbrook Field Senior Center. The format is designed to allow the candidates to introduce themselves to the community, talk about their experiences, and why they want the seat for which they are running. Invitations have been sent to the candidates, and while they are not required to be present, it's our hope they will all be able to attend. This event will also be broadcast by LPAC and uploaded onto the public access on YouTube.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Remember that.